We will call to order the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors Work Session Tuesday, December 15, 2020, 4:30 PM in the Gallery Room of the Chatham Community Center located at 115 South Main Street, Chatham, Virginia. Roll call, please.
Mr. Davis?
Present.
Mr. Dudley?
Present.
Mr. Farm?
Here.
Mr. Ingram?
Here.
Dr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Scare?
Here.
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Dr. Miller, seconded by Mr. Scare. Any discussion on the motion? Please cast your votes. Okay, Dr. Miller, one more time. Please cast your votes. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. For the citizens' convenience, all work sessions and committee meetings are now being recorded and can be viewed on the same YouTube location as the Board of Supervisors Business Meeting. Please remember that the Board's work session is designed for internal board and county staff communications, discussions, and work. It is not a question-and-answer session with the audience. Accordingly, during the work session, no questions or comments from the audience will be entertained. Respectfully, any outbursts or disorderly conduct from the audience will not be tolerated and may result in the offending person's removal from the work session. As a reminder, all county citizens and other appropriate parties as designated by the Board's bylaws are permitted to make comments under the hearing of the Citizens Section of tonight's business meeting. Okay, Page 80, it is 2020 County Audit Presentation, Ms. Vanderheide.
You each should have a copy of the year's audit report before you, as well as a presentation that Mr. Scott Wickham will present to you on the finances of the county, and I'm going to turn it over to him.
My name is Scott Wickham. I'm Partner in Charge of the County's Audit. Can I give you a little background? You know, I think everything has been a challenge this year. The audit was a challenge, and not so much on the finance side, it was just more of the getting things accomplished side. I, we started in May, remote. I really appreciated all the different departments uploading files to us to work remotely during our prelim work during that timeframe. We've got files from county admin and finance and school board and social services, so I really appreciate everybody helping out with that. Later on in the year, I believe this was early October or late September, we came in for fieldwork, so we just came onsite and wrapped up, but all the various departments had information pulled for us or uploaded for us and helped, limited some of the contact and help us through the process of an unusual year, but still obtaining the goal of a really good, really good audit of the county. So, difficult process, but overall, good product. So, I'm going to go through the audit report itself, a few high points here. This is the larger report that you have in front of you before I get to the presentation handout as well. On pages two through four of that is the independent auditor's report. This goes to talk about the numbers, and you all have an unmodified, a clean, good opinion. It means that the numbers we report on here are materially accurate. There is additional paragraph there for a restatement related to the IDA restatement, as well as a change to the amortization of the bond premiums. This report gets longer and longer each year, but the management discussion and analysis that Kim has provided here is a great summary, especially gives you some good comparative data if you're just trying to get an idea of the changes from year to year. On page 15, Exhibit 1, this is the full accrual balance sheet that includes everything related to the county asset-wise, deferred outflows, liabilities, deferred inflows, and net position. Net position is the equivalent of a net worth from a business standpoint. You have the different categories there. Net investment in capital assets is the amount that's tied up in infrastructure and buildings and vehicles, all less that related debt that corresponds to those items. The unrestricted amount there is the amount you have to use for your projects and things going forward. You see the school board there. The number that jumps right out at you is that negative $80 million. That's really common for a school district in Virginia. They're allocated a portion of the teacher pension liability with the state. It's nothing they've done wrong. They pay what they're told to pay, but it is a significant amount, and that does give you net, net negative, net position there, very common throughout the state. On page 17, Exhibit 3, this is a balance sheet as well. This is on the short-term modified accrual basis accounting, so this is going to be your cash basis plus your short-term receivables, less your short-term payables, given the resulting fund balance or the net worth of that fund. And the unassigned fund balance is the good measuring stick of where the county is at, and the general fund reported $26.1 million in unassigned fund balance this year. One new item that points out on Exhibit 3 this year is the unearned revenue of $3.5 million. The funds received from the state through the Federal Treasury Office for CARES Act through the Coronavirus Relief Fund were deferred as unearned revenue until the eligible expenses were met. Exhibit 5, Page 19, this is the income statement on that same short-term modified accrual basis accounting, and as you can see there, the general fund had about a $6.9 million increase this year, and I'll kind of give you an idea of where that stands in the presentation handout as well. So, a lot of that goes to improved collections with pulling the date forward with the tax date, and the school had some savings as far as resulting from school closures and things like that as well. Exhibit 7, on Page 21, you have the solid waste fund here. This is the balance sheet for the solid waste fund. It's also included on Exhibit 1, a little bit more detail here. You also have the internal service funds, those are your health insurance funds and the central stores fund. I believe you all are working on the Service Authority becoming a fund of the county pretty much. It will show up here in the future if you all choose to go that route, so it will be in a column right next to the solid waste fund and report that way as well. So, you have Exhibit 8 on Page 22, and that's the income statement. These three exhibits are on the full accrual basis of accounting, so includes all of the accrual liabilities as they are incurred. You did have a $2 million increase in the solid waste fund related to an agreement there, a payment of $1.2 million, an unusual, extraordinary item there. Again, Exhibit 9, the cash flow statement, it gives you a good idea of the operating activities. You can see there, $1.7 million generated for the operating activities of solid waste fund. That's pretty common for a landfill operation to generate operations there as you plan to use those funds to open cells and things in the near future. All right, and with that, there's a lot of detail here in the notes and tables and various items on all the calculations that are in there. I'm going to move always to the back on Page 162. I've covered a little more detail on those financials in the handout. On Page 162, this is the Report on Gas Compliance Report. Again, this is government auditing standards and statements of specifications of audits counties, cities, and towns by the APA requirement. So, the APA gives us a lot of requirements to test certain things. They actually added testing, the fire fund in there this year, so that was a new additional test this year we looked at and came back, it looked really good, so clean report there. No findings at all in the total compliance report, clearly compliant on all those aspects. That's a good report. On Pages 164 and 165, very similar, this is another compliance report, but this is on uniform guidance, what was formerly A133. This is your federal compliance testing, and all the testing related, that came back clean as well, so this is a good unmodified report on that. To kind of give you an idea of what the federal funds, the county, school board, social services are received, those are detailed on Pages 166 and 167. On 166, you'll see a few items starting to be designated as COVID-19 funds. The school board received several different funds related to COVID-19 for the school nutrition program, so we did focus our testing on school nutrition this year. As one of the programs we looked at, as well as the Coronavirus Relief Fund that the county uses as well. But I do expect a lot more items to show up as COVID-19 funding in FY21. So, overall, on the audit report, the audit process went really well considering everything we were working with. I really appreciate all the help we got from all the staff and all of the files that we provided electronically and really helped out. All good, clean reports, the financials improved in general. Are there any questions on the audit report before I move to the handout presentation? All right, and with that, and the first thing I want to point out is on the handout is, my email is on the front there, Contact. If you have any questions later on as you read through it, feel free to reach out and ask those questions. With that, I'll move to Page 2 of the handout here, and let's see if I can... There you go. All right, and so, this is the Exhibit 1 comparative data, so again, that's the full accrual, includes everything as incurred as when the expense was incurred, liability incurred, or the receivable earned, gives you a full accrual picture there in comparative data. As you can see across the bottom, the continuing service ratio has improved as the overall financial position of the county here in the last few years. So, having 18% there is quite an improvement, 11%. And that corresponds to the fund balance, which I'll go over next, on the next page All right, on Page 3, there's a lot of detail here. This gives you a 10-year trend. One challenge with the trend for you all was that several years here, the landfill fund was not in existence, so those expenses related to that in 2017, 2018, and 2011 are included in public works here in the general fund. To pull those out would be a little bit more challenging, but otherwise, you can still compare the other items. You still have the revenue from property taxes growing at about 4% per year, but total revenue is only growing at about 2.8% per year. So, as you can see there, relying more and more on property taxes to fund the overall operations of the general fund, and I think in the long term now will continue to stay true. I do expect the state and federal funding to increase here in FY21 and '22 as related to COVID-19 response, but soon after that, I expected a pretty sharp decline in those funds, kind of similar to what we had during the Aura Recovery Act Fund timeframe as well. We saw a pretty steep decline after the few years of that funding as well. Overall, about a 2% increase per year in expenditures, so you can see the revenues are outpacing the expenditure, outpacing the expenditures, which led to increase in fund balance. Across the bottom there in the blue, you can see the cash balances did grow quite a bit this year from $22 million to almost $35 million. On Page 4, I have a summary here to kind of give you some comparisons on what that means and where that stands. I mentioned that the fund balance increased, but a lot of that fund balance may not be eligible to be used for various items, that might be restricted fund balance and things like that. So, the unassigned fund balance is what a good measuring stick for the county would be, and right above the purple line towards the bottom there, there's unassigned fund balance amount of $26.1 million for the county general fund. Ending unassigned fund balance as a percentage of operating expenditures is about 18.4%. The GFOA recommends a minimum of 16.67%, and that minimum is a nationwide minimum recommendation, and that does not take into impact local economics. Obviously, some tax bases are different than others, some tax payment schedules are different than others. Those that receive payments in June should probably have a little bit higher than those that only receive it once a year in December when the audit is done, June 30th, to kind of give you a base there. But as you can see, there was a good increase in that percentage over the last two years, so you're exceeding the 16.67%, not by a lot, but you did improve that. The total expenditures did decline a little bit this year due to some of those closed operations at the school board. So, when we're looking at this total expenditure, looking at the total county, the total school board, less the amount the county gave the school board to get to the total, so those school closures did lead to a little bit lower total expenditures in that calculation. All right, on the debt summary here, you know, one item that really jumped out at me here, let's see, what you got? The debt summary on Page 5 is, the item that jumped out to me is the amount of debt service that's been paid down since 2011. So, looking back at 2011, there was about $113 million in bonded debt paid, or owed, and compared to now, it's about $66 million, so almost half the debt load. So, that's a great job by the county of getting that debt service paid down back to when you all built quite a few schools and issued a lot of debt there. So, the bottom left, I believe you can see it on the actual handout here, but I went to the 2019 comparative cost report that the APA has and pulled some of the nearby localities to give you an idea of the debt per capita. The FY20 is not available yet. We actually submitted the county's report today along with probably everybody else in the state, so hopefully that'll be available in probably January, February, but right now, the 2019 information is the most accurate, most up-to-date we have available. So, you can see those debt per capita's for the nearby localities, and it's also $3,991 for the state average, so as a county, you're well below the state average on that, so that's a good spot to be. In this total debt, this debt per capita calculation, it includes more items than your bonded debt. So, I did mention that your bonded debt was almost half what it was in 2011, so that's great. The debt number has increased the last few years for the other liabilities, so as you're paying down your bonded debt, the jackment payments on, the net pension liability is increasing. One big part of that this year was the VRS decreased the discount rate from 7% to 6.75%, which had a, I believe about a $7 million impact increase to that liability. I actually heard earlier today that the governor is proposing to pay down quite a bit of that for the teachers, so that will be a good impact. Otherwise, I would expect increases in your VRS rates going forward. So, I was excited to hear about that plan for government, I think that'd be great for the state to invest some in the VRS for the teacher plan to hopefully prevent increases on the teachers going forward. But overall, I was really happy to see that the trend in the debt data for the county, as you all paid off quite a bit of the bonded debt. Other liabilities here are the accrued leave and the calculation of the DEQ landfill closure, things like that, that will be there as normal operating liabilities, but the bonded debt declining there is very good to see. On the tax assessment summary here, most localities have actually seen it to be completely flat or a little bit declining, so to see about a 2% growth per year is pretty good for the county there. A lot of that is in the public utilities and the AP and pipelines and things like that, so that's good to see, the growth there to help out overall. I also looked at the state comparative cost report, and they have the tax rate for each locality, each county in there, and as of the 2019 cost report, which is the calendar year 2018 tax rate, the average tax rate was about 70 cents for a county, and you all were at 62 cents, so below that and declining on the debts, so that looks good as well. All right, Page 7, here's a couple charts that show where the money comes from, the revenues, and where it's gone. You can kind of see visually the same information that's in that trend data that we provided a few pages ago. Page 8 is a similar chart, trend data there, and then on Page 9, kind of gives you a little summary. Each year I provide this to provide some more information on the net pension liability. It's in there, it's a liability, we're required to report it. It doesn't mean that you're going to owe this amount straight right away, it could lead to those increased rates. So, the amount reported is in the middle here at 6.75%. We want to make sure you're aware of that estimate that's provided by VRS. As you can see, if they don't do as well as they expect on their investments, it's a lot more than what they're estimating it to be there, but if they do better, then it's quite a bit less. So, it's a very big estimate, it's based on the actuary hired by VRS, and it appears reasonable, but it is a big estimate that's in there.
Do you see that these numbers, and I'm speaking, this is just a hypothetical opinion, do you see these numbers trending down the more people that transition out of the defined benefit plan 1 and 2 and into the hybrid?
That was the intention. I haven't seen that so much, part of that being the investment area right now. I know that with them declining, that expected investment earnings rate really boosted the liabilities for everyone, but VRS can invest a lot of things that the counties can't, so I do think that's a great plan for the governor to put some of that money in the teachers' plan to help out there. As you can see, the teacher plan aside to the county was $70 million, so that would help out quite a bit going forward. Hopefully, with the investors they have there at VRS, they can turn that into some positive investments, but...
I was just wondering if, you know, we're talking about 20 years down the line...
Sure.
...when people start retiring, the obligations for payouts should help the plan because...
Absolutely.
...the hybrid's going to be like 33% commitment, whereas the defined benefit's 51%.
Sure, I think that that's absolutely why they went to that plan, was to eventually catch up on that.
Okay.
But it might be that far down the road.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
All right, on Page 10, we have the GASBIS 75. This is a very similar informational item here. Wanted to provide you, again, another idea of the estimate that's in here. So, 75 is related to OPEB or other post-employment benefits, which relate to the group life and health insurance credit through VRS, which are considered OPEB plans, and then also the county health insurance plan, which allows retirees to stay on the plan, creating an implicit rate subsidy and resulting liability calculated by the actuary that you all did hire to do that calculation. So, I believe McGriff is the one that you all use, very commonly used throughout Virginia, but this is what they came up with. You might notice the discount rate for that health insurance is a lot lower than the others. If it's an unfunded plan, which most are, it's required to be at the 20-year bond rate instead of the actual investment rate. But again, very significant numbers, estimates based on actuarial information that are in your financial statements. On Pages 11 and 12, a couple items here for upcoming GASBs, upcoming standards. During this year, all of the GASBs were pushed back at least a year due to COVID-19, but fiduciary activities, Statement 84, we'll still go into them back here soon, that will pull the activity funds, which is the money held at the schools by the principals and bookkeepers. That will pull that into our audit report going forward as part of that fiduciary activity standard. It also will change some of the language related to special welfare and things like that accounts, but otherwise, that would be the main impact is pulling in the activity funds there. Leases, when that one goes into play there, one thing I have seen a lot of recently is enterprise working with localities on operating leases for cars, so that's one thing that would go into some places. If you rented a building, a long-term lease on the building, you would now show a liability for those rental payments with a offset right to use, a deferred outflow right to use that building going forward, and that would be discounted of the net present value. So, the net impact of that is not a lot to the bottom line, but the calculations are a lot more complicated, and the main thing to point out to you at this point is start working on getting a listing of those leases that are outstanding. When they gave the guidance for that, they recommended that you compile all the copier leases to make sure they're not material to include, and I really hope not, that would be a lot of leases, but that kind of gives you the idea of what they're looking for there, is to make sure that all that item, all those items are included in the financial statements. Otherwise, the rest of the items here are some general information, and they're a few years down the road. On Pages 13 and 14, each year, we're required to do different testing within VNAV, which is the online VRS retirement system. This is a good, clean report. We report the information to the APA, and they compile all these reports from all the auditors across the state, and then they opine on their overall opinion based on that testing. All the tests that came back clean for the county, which is great. I've also been told that if Fairfax passes, the whole state passes, so, you know, it's great to have a good test for the county, but it's interesting to hear sample size, that's all they were looking for really. All right, on Pages 15 and 16, so I think pretty much everything I said is good about the trending of the financial statements and the overall material compliance. We did have a few small things, recommendation, best practice kind of ideas that I wanted to point out here as well. Looking at the conflict of interest forms, and this is for kind of all the boards, make sure that the planning commission, everybody that is getting those forms and filling those forms out, sometimes the checkboxes are a little confusing, make sure to write NA if you don't think it applies to you, just to make sure that you didn't miss a box by mistake on that. It can be confusing for sure. And then the jail medical co-payments, they probably have been quite busy this year with the things that are going on, but we do want to make sure that when the inmates have requested a doctor's visit or something like that, that they have been posted to their account timely and make sure that it's credited properly. As I mentioned, we did a lot of testing with school nutrition this year related to the COVID-19 funding. During three of the eight monthly submissions in the normal school nutrition, we did notice a clerical error, and looking at it, it was very understandable how the error happens. The form has column A, B, and C, and then when you submit to the state, they want the form to be B, C, A, and it's very easy to see how the numbers go in that way. If you're not very careful, you can make a mistake. This time, it actually ended up as a shorting themselves about $7,000 in those mistakes, so just want to make sure that we have a good review on that process, but I completely understand how it happens. It's actually pretty common, as you can imagine with the way those are set up. A few items on social services, we've had quite a bit of turnover over there, and we just want to make sure that everything's being documented as approval. The case action forms, make sure that you have one for each year to make sure that those people that are receiving those benefits should still be receiving those benefits and that they're getting the right amount, if they are. So, you want to have one of those forms done each year and approved. We had several items that were not, they were correct payments, but they were not properly documented, so we want to make sure that that's done going forward. But then there was some variances on laser reconciliations, and we just want to make sure that when they're submitting those requests with laser, that they're reconciling with the treasurer or the finance office to make sure that they're accounting for every dollar possible to receive and they're not overrequesting as well. So, in October, we did have a variance of about $23,000 that might have been a vehicle that was not claimed, but the finance and social services staff was working on identifying those items after we provided that information to them. The $59,000 variance there was something that actually the social services staff did recognize on their own and is working to correct, but it did result in probably a payment back to the state for an overclaim prior. So, again, the last couple pages here are the letter to governance, a few items here, no new standards really put in play this year as they were all delayed by COVID-19. I mentioned quite a few of the significant estimates, the depreciation was pretty standard, straight-line method, the landfill closure is based on the engineer's estimate, the allowance about for clouts is based on collections historically, and then the net pension and OPEB liabilities, as mentioned. But overall, the audit went really well. Everybody was extremely helpful in getting all the information we needed. We did have those few minor, small-dollar compliance-type items that we wanted to point out, but otherwise, financially, I think the county is moving in a great, great direction. Seeing that fund balance go up a little bit was very helpful. Seeing the debt come off the books is great as well, so I feel pretty good about where the county is financially. The audit went really well. Are there any questions?
Any questions?
I just have to say, Mr. Wickham always does an outstanding job when he comes, and he's very thorough, and... And I appreciate his honesty and I trust him. He's the only auditor I've, one of the very few auditors I've met that I trusted. He's one of them. I think he'd be very good in Washington DC.
I don't know about that, but I do appreciate that statement.
Questions or comments? Again, thank you very much. Appreciate the job you do. Mr. Smithman, I will assume that any of these areas, we, we're taking necessary steps for corrective actions and improvement. I know that I, I see Ms. Worley's here from the finance department of the school system. I'm sure she will work on getting A, B, C to be CBA. She's, uh, she's so meticulous, I'm surprised, 'cause she, uh, she's mistake-free. We appreciate you, all of you, very much. We, we're very proud of our staff and our finance departments in both the school system and in the county.
Yeah.
I think they do an excellent job and obviously you all do an excellent job. So it's, it's good when you come in and give us good feedback, so.
Always great to get good news.
Yeah. Always great, yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you all. And again, my contacts there if you have questions later on.
Uh, Ms. Worley, Dr. Miller.
Kim, could I get you, please? Just for my constituents in a report that I'm going to be putting together this week. I want to please, well, I see on page nineteen the listing of where our revenues come from. But may I please get from you a listing of what our miscellaneous income sources are? And, and also intergovernmental sources are, please?
I sure will. You want me to email that to you?
That'd be fine.
Okay. And I can copy you all as well, so you can see.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fader. Any other questions or comments for board members?
Thank you all. Thank you all.
Okay. Reassessment update, update presentation, Nick Mars.
Good morning, gentlemen. I've got to get it ready for that cold ice tomorrow, so. Good evening. Thank you for your time. I'm here to introduce Mr. William Cole for Bright Minds. They are a contractor for the assessment. As you know, the assessment, every four years, we're running ours through 2021 and then the fund starts around October when the folks will come in there and try to either accept the assessment or provide a reason why the assessment might be off. Prior to that, introduced the process, who Bright Minds is, the process they're using, some of the challenges that we've come across, and then the solutions as we move forward. It's moving on schedule, on timeline. There's a few little hiccups with COVID impacting a couple of offices, both Bright Minds and our commissioner of revenue. There's some changes because Bright Minds is a new company for Pennsylvania County's conduct of the assessment and that newness brings an updated process, which can create friction. As we all know, humans have a tendency to resist change, even if it's a good change. So there's a little bit of friction, not bad, but there is a little bit of friction to, that he'll talk about tonight. And then again, there's a lot of good teamwork going on. My role in this is so that Mr. Smithman does not have to get phone calls. So I'm the guy that everyone, from the commissioner of revenue office to the fine citizens will sit there and shoot at and he'll giggle loudly, offer me a sweet tea, and then we'll just keep moving forward and call this thing good. But with that, you should have received in, hopefully in the mail aheads, the commercial property preliminary evaluation and then a preliminary fair market value assessment. And William will talk about that as he goes in. So, William?
Thank y'all for having me tonight. I appreciate it. I'm gonna jump right into it. We have a slideshow prepared for you. I'm gonna go through and if you have any questions throughout this, you can feel free to stop me. I'll do the best I can to answer them. Our overview of the presentation, brief introduction, we have our sales study overview. You should have received that a couple of months ago. I'm not gonna go into it unless you have questions about it. I didn't bring a copy with me, but it's a starting point for us. So it's, it's really not a lot to go over until the end and we have something to compare to. We'll go through our process. We'll give you an update on where we're at in the project. We have some areas of improvement concerns and some suggestions for those areas of improvement. We have our current request out that we'll discuss, what we've requested and some of the responses we got. And then we'll have a question and answers at the end if you want to ask anymore. This is a slideshow on our project team. We have our internal team of Bright Minds. We're working with Keystone, which is the data, the data technology company that, where they store the data and we enter our information into their system. Of course, we have the commissioner of revenue. We're working with them on building permits and combinations and splits and other aspects of the project. Then we have the county, which is basically working with Nick. He oversees a lot of the meetings and, and, and some of the, makes sure, manages the responsibility, make sure everybody is on the same page with everything. This is just a slide that I had in the original presentation I did a while back for you. It's just a methodology refresher to show you what we're doing. We're doing our UAV site inspection and then we go out for physical inspections as needed and that's our blended approach. And like I said, I just put this slide in here to remind myself to, to, to talk about that we had given you the sales study. If you have any questions, if you want to ask me at the end, I'll do the best I can to answer them. We gave you a residential study as well as a commercial industrial study. This just allows us to have, like I said, our starting point where we know where we're beginning with the, the way the year's been going and the changes. This, it's good to know where you start and when we end up, we can compare back to that. This is an outline of our process. As soon as we started, we started in on the building permits, trying to get them called up for the end of the year for this tax year. We're gonna be working on those throughout the project, updating those, going out as needed for inspections. Then we do our UAV site inspections. Those are, that's the first round of review. We send that information out to our appraisers and listers to go through. We mark anything we need to make changes on. We enter that into the CAMA system and then finally we do our final review once it's entered into the system and we can go over and make sure we don't have any, need to correct anything. This is just the status of our progress so far. We're over fifty percent completed on our flights. We're about close to thirty percent as of last week on our appraisals. January, we plan on starting the data entry full speed. We wanted to get some answers to some questions about implementing some new processes, which we, I found out tonight before we started that we are gonna be implementing those and I'll be talking about those later in the presentation. And then we'll do our final reviews and as I said before, throughout the project, we'll be updating the building permits. This is a significance dates page. We have created spreadsheets and, and dates that we're keeping track of all the different parts of the project. So we broke it up into the, the various parts that we just talked about, the data entry, flights, appraisals, and we did a tracker to, to set times where we can check and make sure we're on track to finish on time. So we did a really aggressive timeline. I want to finish as early as possible so that we can leave room for review. So we want to have everything entered into the CAMA system by the end of July and I don't think we're gonna have a problem doing that unless something crazy happens, which is, seems to happen a lot lately. But I don't, I don't think it's gonna affect us. I think we're gonna be fine. Then we'll start our review and, and it'll be ready for the, send it out, send out the notices to the property owners.
Gentlemen, what you'll see, you'll see this slide throughout the process. Stoplight chart on the bottom really, it's green, is they're gonna nail, they're nailing their target. Yellow is, there's a question about whether they can get there, but it's not sure they're commencing. They're just a little bit behind track. And if you see a red dot, anytime when you see this slide later, it means that there's an issue. They've missed the major milestone. Anything that's white, major milestone, so far out, it's not being assessed just yet.
Concerns area was in areas of improvement. These are some of the concerns and areas of improvement that we, we've already addressed that have come up since we started. I'm going through these one by one on the next slides. First is the complaints from citizens regarding areas of operations. We had some citizens who wanted to know where we were flying the drone, when we were flying it. What we did for that was we created an interactive map that we put on the website. If you look at the bottom right of that screen, there's a link associated on the homepage of the Pennsylvania County website where property owners can go. We fill in the grid maps with color to show where we're flying for that week. They can scroll in and you can see the streets, see everything that you need to see to, to know where we're at. And then at last resort, they can give us a call and we'll be happy to talk to them or explain to them where we're at and what we're doing. Another concern was transitioning from paper to digital workflow. When we first started, we got a huge stack of paper that we had to scan and, and, and get into the system. So we had a little bit of a, a, a slow start with it to get everything put into the, the way that we wanted it. As you can see, it's a little, can't see it very well, but in the background, there's a Google Drive. That's the platform that we're using to, to share information with the commissioner of revenues office. So when we have a building permit, we create a folder on the Google Drive. We share it with them. We put all the information in there for them. They can go in there, see the same thing that we can see. We can see each other in real time in the folder and they can make changes, leave comments, add information to it and, and download pictures if they need to out of it. So it's a, it's a workspace that we're both able to use remotely and we don't have to drop off anything or pick up anything. It really provides a, a good platform for us to use for everybody to work together. The way that we've come up with the way we're working together is by having various meetings, doing things like that that where we all voice our concerns, we work through them. And as Nick said, when you have new processes like that and you're implementing new ideas, there's always gonna be a little, little friction when you're going from things always being done a certain way and you're trying to do new things, it's, it's, it's just, it's just gonna happen. And I think we're doing a good job of working through these problems and finding solutions to those. Next one is the training implementation, implementation of data entry into the CAMA system. This is more of an internal Bright Minds concern that I had, making sure that our team was getting that stuff entered into the CAMA system the correct way. When you go into a locality, even if they use the same CAMA software, everybody does things a little bit different. Every county wants things done a little bit different. So learning how the county wants things done and incorporating that in the way we do things is important. And when we're getting training on the CAMA system, what I experienced with me was going back, trying to figure out how we did something that we did three weeks ago when I hadn't done it in three weeks. So we created a library of small training videos for each aspect of the data entry and we keep adding to it as we go. So if, if a team member comes up and says, hey, I can't remember how you sketched that house with, with the angles on it, we create a little video, we slide it in there and everybody can reference it, go back to it and references that as needed. One, another concern, collaboration between Bright Minds County and individual departments. The solution for that is, is communication. And the way we've been doing that is through technology-based communication, Zoom meetings, emails, using the telephone, being able to transfer the data through the Google Drive. The commissioner's office is able to get on there and leave comments. If they're keying a property record into the system for the building permit and they don't understand what we meant by this, they can leave a comment, it sends me an email. I can go in and directly respond to it and then change the title of it back to what they know that we've responded and they can go make the change. Also, one thing that we've talked about recently, in my experience with, with the building inspections department, typically what will happen is those property owners at the end of the job and we're doing the hearings will come to you and say, well, here's my plans and specs for the new house that I built. Why is yours off by two hundred square feet? Well, we do exterior measurements and it's usually off a little bit compared to the plans and specs. So what we want to do is start getting those plans and specs, keeping a copy of them. Right now, the county doesn't keep a copy of them. They give them back to the builder or the property owner once they're finished with them. We want to keep a copy of them and have that at the end, get it one step ahead. Instead of having to wait for that property owner to come in at the end to feel their assessment and bring that, we want to go ahead and have it in as another reference for us to go to. This is probably the most important slide we have up here and it's talking about the utilization of the CAMA system. The limitations of manual application. The best way I can explain it is, is if you have an Excel spreadsheet and you're making changes, imagine that you have the fifty thousand records, like the amount of parcels in Pennsylvania County, and you're trying to make changes to each of those records that are for the similarities. If you go into each one of those and you have to change each record every time you want to change something, it's very time consuming. It leaves a lot of room for human error. It's, it's a cumbersome process. So that's the whole point of Excel is they come out with where you can change one sale and it applies to all these different other property characteristics. And that's not what's happening in the CAMA system right now. Right now, for physical depreciation, you have to go in there and manually change the depreciation for every property. You have to go in there and change the rate for every outbuilding that you want to change. They're not set up on any kind of table. They're not being depreciated and they're not, the CAMA system's not being utilized to the, to what it was designed to do. And it was designed so that you don't have to do that. And these bullet points are the, are reasons why we think that we need to make changes to that. Increased chance of human error when entering data into the CAMA system, high probability of equalization issues, limited ability to update values throughout the project. If I get to the end of this project and as you've seen this year, the, the cost of materials has gone through the roof and I have to make a change to the, to the cost tables and I don't have any tables, I'm gonna have to go in and change every single outbuilding, every garage that was, frame garage that was built. I need to have to change that one rate for every one of them rather than going into that table and changing that one rate and it applies to every property. So it's really important that we get those changes made so that we can be more uniform and, and equal for all different property types.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Is this something that is a go-forward thing for us to solve or is there something we can be doing now? Did you correct this page?
We're, we're doing it. I found out tonight that we've, I brought it to Nick's attention. Nick brought it to the county. The county agreed to go ahead and implement the, setting up the tables under the CAMA system. Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna straighten it out. It's gonna be a, a cumbersome process because we're changing the way that CAMA system handles that information. But in the long run, five, ten years from now, you're gonna, it's gonna be very, very important to have it done that way. I don't understand why it's never been done before really because the CAMA system's designed to do that. That's the whole reason that it's there is so that you can have a equalization and uniformity throughout all those properties. But yeah, we're, we're working on that.
I may be putting the cart before the horse, but if this goes forward, what it sounds like it may, will this fall on the new GIS manager?
No, this is purely a commissioner of revenue exercise. My biggest question is, why would we change our CAMA system?
That's an option.
And this is a Keystone product. If we decide to genizem this and get to a different product going forward, are we? This is a Keystone issue, this is a human issue, this is a combination of the two, present. What's the answer to that?
This is a, this is a, this is a county not utilizing the CAMA the correct way issue. So it's a Keystone issue, but according to Keystone, they have the capability to, to, to make these changes happen. But that's.
We gotta do our part.
And, and I don't understand why it's never been done before as far as already having it set up. But to, to your other question about going with another company, I don't think any company would come in and say, we're not gonna go ahead and set you up on tables right away.
Sure.
If you did have to make that change.
Sure.
And I'll go through it some more on what it looks like with the tables. So here's a sample depreciation table. Right now, every appraiser has to put a percentage on every property for every house instead of coming to this table and putting a condition and a year bill where it pulls that out. So when you get into, start looking at these properties and you go to a 2010 house, for example, of an average condition, if that appraiser says it's a built in 2010, it's average condition, it's pulling twelve percent all across the county. Right now, you can go to a 2010 house and it might say twelve percent. And then another appraiser from the other side of the county might have put twenty percent. The other one might have put fifteen percent. It's no uniformity. There is some uniformity, but there's not guaranteed uniformity. I can't go to a property owner and they say, well, how do you know what that depreciation is? And I say, well, here's our table we used. This is why we did it. Because it's just one person's opinion and you have five appraisers looking at it. They're all gonna have different opinions and it, it's an unequal process. And it's the same principle and concept for all of these tables that I'm talking about. I don't want to keep, you know, beating a dead horse, but for this example, you can't really see it. I put it in blue on the example. There's, there's five different home site values within that little cluster of properties and that shouldn't be. They should all be a similar home site. When you say home site, you're pulling one acre or less for your site value out of the total property. So it doesn't matter if that property's five acres, ten acres, or less than one acre. When you pull the home site out, they should be equalized. So say you use a twelve thousand dollar home site, all of those should be twelve thousand. And then you can apply a percentage adjustment. Say one's sitting in a gully, you say a minus twenty-five for topography. Or one's sitting on a hill overlooking a pond, you say a plus twenty-five for superior site. You make a note and it's easy to explain to the property owner. I can't explain why these are all over the place like that and it makes it difficult for my job to be able to say, this was a fair and equitable assessment because we don't know because they're all over the place and we don't know the methodology behind why they did it. There's, a lot of them don't have notes, some of them do, but a lot of them don't have notes of why they did what they did. did what they did. Outbuilding tables, same thing. Every garage that's average quality, average condition garage built around the same time, that's the same size, should be valued the same way. There shouldn't be a garage built in 2010 that's average quality and average condition, one valued at $20 a square foot and one valued at $10 a square foot. That defeats the whole, the whole equity, the equalization and uniformity purpose for the whole reassessment. So, having the tables, again, will ensure that's equal and uniform, and you can explain it, and then at the end you can change it. You get in there and $25 a square foot for a garage, things go through the roof, everybody wants a garage, it goes up to 50. You make one change in that CAMA and it changes all of them. Neighborhoods, these are a little different. If, if you go through Pennsylvania County and you see neighborhoods that are superior and neighborhoods that are inferior, you have your cost tables set up. All the dwellings that size, that year, that quality rating are pulling $69 or $70 a square foot. But then you get in a neighborhood where there's demand, there's other things influencing, like on this example, you have the golf course. That's a, that's a factor that's influencing that whole neighborhood. It's not impacting just one property. It's impacting all of them. Right now, you have to go into every parcel and put a percentage change in there, but if you have your neighborhood set up, and, and we, I've, I've done that in the past where you set your neighborhoods up, you can, you can do them on the GIS where people can go in and see their neighborhood boundaries. They can look at their neighbors and know that they're all equalized. Then you can apply percentage adjustment to that whole area and all the improved properties, and even the land. Set your land tables up. You have a neighborhood, your land sales are coming in, you have a new development, land sales are coming in 10% higher. You apply a neighborhood 10% factor, adjust all of them equally, uniformly, and you have, and you can explain it to the property owner, which is one of the most important things, is being able to support why you did what you did. Some of the status of solutions, this was done before I found out that we were going to implement the tables. So, a lot of this was based on me trying to convince you to implement the tables, but we've already agreed to do that so we can move on. And then, we've started creating tables so that we can implement them. We were going to use them internally anyway and just have to manually do it, which would cause a lot of room for error, but now that we have that going, we can, we can start putting that in, in, in play. And then, this is the information request for the residential property owners. We also have a commercial information request for income and expense information. It's really important to get that information, and it does multiple things. It allows us to have interior information for properties and the property owner giving it to us. It allows the property owner a chance to give us information before the appeals process, because usually what happens is we get to the appeals process and everybody wants to talk about their property, everybody wants to appeal it, and everybody has an issue, and we only have two weeks to squeeze that in. When you start opening up that contact with the property owners, let them think about the reassessment, let them have something come to them and, and for them to fill out so that, that we get that conversation started. It gives us time to process that information and, and open that line of communication with them so that we can address the issues before we get to scramble and try to do it all in a short time period. And I think Nick wanted to touch on this a little bit.
Gentlemen, on this, what's already in process is posting the questionnaire and the property assessment alert letter on social media, our website, and it will be going in the papers prior to the first of the year. And then, we have just, I've just completed a drawdown through GIS of the number of property owner for tax paid parcels. We're putting that out for a bid for, with a mailing company, and they will mail that out also. So, we're going to tack it in both social media. We'll tack it on our website. We'll tack it in print media, and then we'll get it personal mailing out. While it may seem a little overkill, what it does ensure is that we're making just every effort we can throughout the county to make sure that folks know this is coming. As Williams said, they get the opportunity to have their input prior to showing up, and then hopefully this process. While we know there will always be some disagreement and angst with it, that it will be a much smoother, easier process when we get to the final assessment discussion.
Mr. Cole, would it be possible for the board members to get a copy of your presentations so we can have it in a PDF form just to kind of look at and refresh our thoughts, because we're going to get some calls as board members, and I, I'd just like to have the information refreshed. So, I'm saying, I'm saying, I'm, I'm able to explain
Yeah, the PDF of this here?
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Your, your presentation about the tables and the whole
I think, uh, Charlie, sure. Because if we have it already in the county.
If you send it to David, we'll get it out to them in the Friday update.
I just think it would be good that we had the ability to refresh our memories on what you presented tonight.
Sure, absolutely. Yeah, I'll look it over. I tried to provide some explanations on some of the things that, that, that were, I felt like were a little lengthy, but that's why I didn't read word for word. But, yeah, if you have any questions, y'all can direct them to me and I'll answer them the best I can. But, absolutely, I'd rather you have a copy.
And I, when they call, you know, when they get this, a lot of them are going to call us. I'd like to be able to pull it up and look at the form and say, well, you know, this is why they're getting this, you know. Mr. Cole told us that based on da-da-da-da-da, this is why they're doing that, you know. And it just makes it easier. I mean, tonight, I get it all, but five months from now?
Oh, I understand.
I might need to pull it up and look at it a little bit before I start talking to anybody.
I understand that, absolutely. Then the questions and answers portion, any questions that anybody wants answers to?
Anybody on the board got any questions? Everybody good? Mr. Smith?
Do you anticipate, you know, this table thing was a pretty major hurdle we, you have pushed us through to, to make a rough patch smoother? Do you anticipate any or foresee any portions of this project where you are skeptical or concerned or anticipate any amount of problem?
I'm a little skeptical taking on that much change in one, one time with all those tables being implemented, because you're going to be pretty much impacting every property. So, and me not being in control of implementing that because the CAMA company is going to be responsible, that's one, one thing that I would say I would be concerned with, is making sure that they're able to, to me, to fulfill that. And maybe we, Nick comes up with a, you know, some kind of plan for checkpoints for them when, okay, how long is it going to take to get that done and that done? But, other than that, I think the other concerns that I, that we've had and we talked about, we've, we've started working towards solutions. There's been a learning curve, and, you know, with us and the Commissioner's office with changing over from the, like I said, from the paper stuff, and, and, and just doing it different than it's always been done. I think that's the number one thing, is, is changing from the way it's always been done, but I think we're working through it, and I don't anticipate it to be a problem because I feel like that we're going to keep finding solutions.
I want to say this out loud and make sure the conclusion's right, because I want everyone to understand that this table means the five disparate views of value are going to be equalized, which means there is going to be, in some cases, potentially dramatic changes in assessment value.
Correct.
That's what I got from it.
I just want to make sure if you haven't heard that.
You know, Mr. Ingram had pointed out that it's in our packet, but I would like to see it in a direct email, so I can pull it out and put it on my desktop, and it just, we're going to be able to hit it really quick. Thank you.
There's, there's going to be major change, especially for, for properties that were incorrectly done in the past. There're going to be major change because everybody's going to be on a level playing field once we have the tables implemented, as long as everything goes smooth, and we'll just have to do quality checks. But when their tables are set up, and you can run reports and queries, and you know when things aren't valuing outright, you can keep checking back to it and checking back to it. But, the properties, I would say that the people, the, the property owners who are going to see the most change are the, the properties that were incorrectly done to their advantage and they weren't ever called. Because most people don't come to the hearings and say, my value's way too low. Most people come and say it's too high. So, the people who don't come and say it's too low, and that garage has been valued at $10 a square foot for years, and now it's going to go to 25, they're going to come in and say, that garage's been there for, for 50 years or 20 years or whatever, and we say, well, you know, now it's on the table, now it's equal, it's just like your neighbors and everybody else, and so that will be a difference.
Just follow, just follow. No, just follow right along. I agree with everything you just said. Mr. Cole, I, I see this, I don't know if it's for myself, but especially for you guys, it's going to be painful because of the historical that's been built until, like I say, now maybe. I understand you have to have a slate to, to build from, and I understand these tables are going to be maybe a direct result and, and what you, the input that you got given back to you, but it's, it's going to be major. Everyone needs to understand that.
The easy thing to do is to come in and say, oh, it's, we'll, we'll work with what we got and not make any big changes, and that's the less, least resistance. But, in the long run, just keeps, doing it the wrong way over and over again is not the right way, and it's going to be a lot of work for our team and our, and our group, and it's, it's going to take probably, I would say, multiple reassessments, whether it's us or another company doing it. It's going to take time to iron out the problems, because there's going to be some problems when you're making those kind of changes. But, I'm confident that we can get it done, and we'll just work through those problems we've done so far.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I think it's all about fairness and transparency. I do agree, there's going to be some people that are going to be winners in this deal, though, that have probably maybe been paid too high a square footage. You won't hear from them, because they're going to be assessed down. There'll be, we're just not going to hear from them. If it goes from, should have been 10, it was 20. You're not going to hear from them. They're just going to be happy. We don't hear from the people that it goes from, was 10, going to 20. That's what you're going to hear from them, so.
Well, one of the banking complaints occurred four years ago, right when I got here, and when we all said at that time, that's the last time we're doing it this way, because we heard a lot about inequity. And the good news is, and it is going to be painful, you know, I just, I mean, I've seen these things too, but it's going to be a lot easier going forward. It's going to be a lot more defensible, and, and I think, and Caleb is online right now listening to the meeting, and then he's here. We're going to do a good job with Mr. Cole's help of publicizing that we are correcting all the things that have been like, you know, years. Expect to see changes, and I think we need to live into that narrative so that we don't catch people by surprise.
Any more questions for me?
Anybody else?
I only have one statement, Mr. Chairman. Well, up in Pennsylvania County.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Y'all have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Cole.
Okay, we're down to number six. A committee meeting recommendations from both finance and economic development. Mr. Smith?
All right, we'll do the best we can to review what we did today, to carry forward with the board's action this evening.
I've got it written down if you want, David.
Uh, got it.
Okay. For board members who weren't here, there were seven recommendations from the Finance Committee for potential action at tonight's business meeting. The first one was to, the Finance Committee recommend approval of the 640 memorandum of understanding agreement. The second thing is the Finance Committee recommended adoption of the solid waste reimbursement resolution. The third thing, the Finance Committee recommended for the full board was approval of the personnel changes as outlined in your packet. The fourth thing that the Finance Committee agreed, recommended was approval of the Danville Life Savings Crew agreement with the following change. Inclusion of a clause that provides a 90-day equipment installation extension for the date with evidence being presented by Danville Life Savings Crew of COVID-related delays. Number five, the Finance Committee recommended approval of the purchase of EMS-related Life PAC 15 purchases using CARES funds. Number six, the Finance Committee recommended that the Labella landfill cell C design contract amendment addendum be approved. And finally, seven, the Finance Committee recommended transmission of the county's fire and EMS capital equipment inventory list to the Fire Rescue Commission for creation of an equipment replacement schedule that they can recommend back up to this board. So, those are the seven items. We can discuss for anybody who wasn't here, those items now, or we can discuss them at the business meeting under matters from the work session.
Any questions? Anybody want to discuss any of them?
Not a discussion, but it would be helpful to us if, if you preferred not to vote on these as a block, to go ahead and tell us which ones you want to pull out for individual consideration, or we can move them forward as one vote.
Does anybody oppose to move them forth as, as one block?
That's fine.
Everybody okay with moving them as a block?
I'm good.
Can I move them as a block?
Yes, sir. All right.
Okay. All right, can I get a motion? Nothing from Economic Development.
No, sir.
And then can I get a motion that we go into closed session?
So moved.
Sure, I, I'll read it in.
Sure. For people at home, we have two primary closed sessions tonight. The first one is consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by the public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. Legal authority Virginia Code Section 2.2, 3711a8. Subject matters: landfill solar proposal, Cool Branch-Franklin County EMS agreement, Keeling Board Directors' mass resignation, potential no government shutdown resolution, and Danville intergovernmental agreement. The purpose for all those subject matters is legal consultation slash advice regarding the same. The second closed session is discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose or of the disposition of publicly held real property where discussion in open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. Legal authority Virginia Code Section 2.2, 3711a3. Subject: jail land. Purpose: discussion of related property acquisition for a public purpose.
Take that, make a motion.
I'll make that motion one more time.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made by Mr. Davis, seconded by Mr. Dudley. Any discussion on the motion? You voting electronically?
I'll just go.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Farmer?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Certified closed session. Being resolved at the meeting of Pennsylvania County Board Supervisors on December 15, 2020, the board hereby certifies our recorded vote that the best of these board members' knowledge on the public business matters lawfully exempted from opening meeting requirements to the Freedom of Information Act and identifying the motion authorized the closed meeting were heard. Discuss or consider the closed meeting. If any board member believes there is departure from the requirements of the act, he shall so state. Prior to the vote, it became the substance of the departure of the state. Shall be recorded in board's minutes. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Farmer?
Yes.
Mr. Ingram?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Chairman Warren?
Yes.
The meeting has been certified.
All right.
We just entered adjourned the work session.